We haven't got a clock in here yet, but y'all can trust my watch.
The roll reflect that all council members are in attendance and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we're going to begin with employee introduction. We have two new employees joining the city, Melanie or Julie, I'll turn that over to you. Thank you.
I'll do the first one. This is Megan White. Megan is our new deputy city clerk. She started with us last August and was immediately thrown right into the election process. She started the week before the primary. So prior to joining the city, Megan spent four years at the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. So she's been a tremendous asset. She lives in Hastings with her fiancee and we're really excited she's here.
Chief, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here. You have an introduction?
Yeah.
Kyle Kotowski. Kyle comes from us, from the city of Woodbury. He was born and raised in Woodbury. Most recently moved to Cottage Grove and is engaged to be married next November. So I'd like to introduce Kyle. His fiancee Jackie would like to pin a badge on him.
Sounds great, let's do it. Great, thank you. Appreciate that very much. Next, we're going to have the Employee Recognition Program. Council asked that we come through. Yes.
And recognize service awards for our city employees.
Mayor and council, thank you. Guests, members of the public. It's my honor tonight to present our 2018 Employee Recognition recipients. For several years now, I've said this is my favorite meeting of the year and this year is no different. Tonight, we get to recognize 25 employees representing 295 years of service to the Hastings community. These employees represent all aspects of our organization and they are a great representation of what happens when we hire smart, invest in our people, and build a team environment. To quote Mother Teresa, "You can do what I cannot do. I can do what you cannot do. Together, we could do great things." I'm proud of this team and I'm proud of the work we do and I'm pleased to be able to present these awards. Little lay of the land is, we're going to go in order of years of service and come up and get your certificate and a pin and then ask you to shake the mayor and council's hands. And when we're all done with everybody, we'll do one big group photo. So. All right, so let's get this started. I know not everybody is here, but I am just going to go in order of who we have. So five-year is our first recognition. We have Lauren Foss. Lauren is in our finance department. We have Matt Hedrick in our police department. Matt's not here tonight either. Chris Jenkins. It's hard to miss Chris. Chris, our parking rector. We have Eric Kramer from our Public Works Department. Ryan McGraw. Did I see Ryan? Ryan from Fire. And I know Officer Chris Nelson is here. I saw him back here. Al Nordquist. Al, our IT manager. Al's been busy today getting this all ready for us. So thank you all. And Chief Brian Schaefer, five years. Joe Spagnuelli with our Public Works Direct, uh, Public Works Department, excuse me. Communications extraordinary, Lee Stoffel, five years with us. And Dean Sukie with our Fire and EMS Department. And we have several people there celebrating 10 years. Tonight, we have Dave Bauer. Dave, Police Department. Kyle Linschad with our Police Department. Matt Schleifer with our Police Department. We have Amy Carlson. Where's Amy? Come on up, Amy. Dave Janson with Fire and EMS. Is Dave here tonight? And we have a police reservist for 10 years, Joey Troutman. Joey is not here tonight, but 10 years as a police reservist is pretty impressive. So thank you to Joey. Moving on to 15 years, Chris Paulson. Is Chris here tonight? 20 years. 20 years. Mary Kofor, who runs a records division in police and keeps everybody straight over there. Mary Kofor is 20 years. I don't think she's here with us tonight, though. Okay? And I know I saw Jeff Elliott here. Jeff, 20 years. Where is he? Come on up, Jeff. Addie Schroeder. Did Addie make it tonight? So Addie's been with us for 20 years and she retired right after this year's election. So she was a rock star with elections for a long time. Thank you, Addie. Penny Schultz from our Fire Department. Penny's not here tonight, okay? 20 years for Penny. And Tim Tessier. Tim in a Parks and Rec. All right. We're down to the final two. 25 years. Sandy Basil. Sandy here? And I sort of feel like we need a drumroll for this last one. I won't ask anybody to raise their hands if they weren't born when Paul started working, but Paul Mahoney has been here with us for 40 years. Paul, 40 years. That's awesome. Okay, then I think we're going to do a group picture now. So if you've... Yes. Yeah, we do the new place after.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next order of business. We have a couple of presentations. First, I'd like to recognize State Senator Carla Bigum, who represents us in the State Senate. She'd like to say a few words here at the end of the year. Senator, we're very glad to have you here. Welcome to our Hastings City Council meeting.
Oh, Your Honor, thank you and council members, thank you. I just wanted to come and talk and say thank you for all your service.
Mayor Hicks. And congratulations on your newfound freedom and a lot of free time and wish you well on retirement. You certainly have done a lot for this community. Also wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Brock and Councilmember Vaughn for your reelection. And also just wanted to say that I look forward to seeing the council up at League of Minnesota Cities Day in the, during the session that starts on January 7th. And I know we have a lot of good advocates here for the city of Hastings and I know there's some big projects, whether it's Highway 61 through 16 or some bonding money for the city hall here. So certainly going to be working together on that. And I just wanted to say my office is always open and please let me know if I can be of assistance. We'll be looking at some local government aid. I know that that's a big deal as well. You know, I'm all about local control and local governments where it's at. So going to be doing some advocacy up there for you guys as well. But also wanted to wish Administrator Melanie well on your new endeavor in Burnsville. So enjoyed working with you. But happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and enjoy the day.
Thank you, Senator. Have a successful session coming up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dakota County Commissioner Mike Slavik, who's here this evening. And give us a presentation of the activities of the county. Mike, we're very glad to have you here. Commissioner? Now people get to see our new technology here in the council chamber. That's being used for the very first time. So we hope that the public will enjoy this medium and it'll be easier for folks who are watching at home as well and those who are attending council meetings. So thank you, everyone. Commissioner, very glad to have you here. Please turn over to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Administrator Mesko Lee, as well as council and staff. As I said, my name is Mike Slavik. I am the District One County Commissioner representing the city of Hastings. And I do appreciate the opportunity to do an annual visit to give an update of what's happened in 2018 for Dakota County as well as what looking ahead will look like. Before that, I would be remiss if I did not go and just acknowledge Mayor Hicks and City Administrator Mesko Lee on your last meeting, which ironically, six years ago on December 17th, was my last meeting in these council chambers. So we get to have something in common with that. So, City Administrator, just want to go and thank you for your years of service as well as, I'm very confident that you'll do great things in the city of Burnsville. So best wishes with that. And then Mayor Hicks, I'd like to just go with that.
I don't know what happened here. I'm sure it's not user error. Come on.
Mayor Hicks, just want to thank you very much for your support over the years, for your friendship, as well as the years of service that you did for Hastings. And want to give you best wishes and on behalf of my colleagues on the Dakota County Board of Commissioners and the almost 1,900 employees that work for Dakota County, we say thank you. We wish you well and of that, 700 of those work in the city of Hastings. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. And I always enjoyed working with you and the county government. We're so fortunate in Dakota County to have a fantastic board and staff. Clearly the best in the state as far as I'm concerned. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And with that, I'll just give the county update that I have. Just want to start with a couple 2018 highlights that we had. First of all, probably everyone in the Hastings area is well aware of the County Road 46 project that happened from Pine Street all the way to Coates and 52. And that project took a little longer than it should have. It was a full reconstruction and hopefully now will be something that we'll just need an overlay in about 15 years. That was a $4 million project that we had and that did get completed. Along with 42 projects total in Dakota County, $55.7 million of transportation projects were done throughout all of Dakota County in 2018. Of that, we also did 49 miles of pavement preservation, trying to make sure that our roads, that we can keep them as long as we can and with that part in there. You're all familiar that we've partnered with the city of Hastings, Rosemont, South St. Paul, West St. Paul, and Inver Grove Heights on an eastern Dakota County transit study in 2018 to be completed in 2019, trying to figure out this eastern part of the county seems to be left out in its transit purposes. So we're working with that with a consultant and partnering to figure out if there's some better ways to go and serve the eastern part of Dakota County in terms of those people who do not have transportation. One of the things also that happened very big in 2018 is we started remodeling Pleasant Hill Library. That is a just under $4 million renovation. A lot of people went and said, "What are you spending that kind of money on the library?" It's brand new. Well, it's actually almost 25 years old now. So we like to do our library renovations roughly every about 15 years. So that will open up next year. We're very excited to see that happen. That'll be expanded meeting space, children's area. Not only is it just reconfiguring libraries as they have changed, but it is also doing an expansion of actually some additional space. So we're really excited for that. And then lastly, one of the things that we would talk and highlight would be that we just hired our new lobbying firm for the next two years. Leonard Simpson Street is going to be the new lobbying firm for the county. So this will be our new partner of what we had after seven years with the previous contract. And then not on here, of course, is the election. We went and had a very busy election season in Dakota County as well as the city did with that. I want to talk a little bit about the budget in 2019, some of the things moving on. In 2019, our transportation budget will be 78.6 million. So we have a lot more projects happening. That does not include the sales tax that we, when we left the County Transit Improvement Board, that will be above that. So one of the biggest impacts for the residents of the Hastings area will be County Road 42 on Nineria Township will be fully reconstructed. That will start in spring, probably after the frost in May, and that will be completed sometime realistically around Halloween. So that road will be closed except for local traffic for almost all of next summer. Another project that the city of Hastings will be partnering with the county on, two of them actually. We have the Vermillion River Greenway, which is the trail system connecting Hastings to Farmington, as well as the Spring Lake Park Reserve Sharps Buff Master Plan will be starting in 2019, going into 2020. And we will have, of course, city staff and council members involved and engaged in that process. Additionally, we have Phase One of our maintenance study. As you're aware, from a, we had a workshop about a year and a half ago. Long-term plan will be the Hastings Transportation Shop will be closing and we are consolidating to Empire Township for a greater scale of our maintenance facilities in Empire Township. Phase One of that, roughly 17, $18 million of that will be in 2019 and '20. Something that I know has been a focus for many of you, as I've spoken to you offline, has been a continued focus on housing and homelessness. The homelessness has really been an agenda that the Dakota County Board of Commissioners has focused on. We put about $1 million of new levy dollars into that. We've opened up a temporary shelter and really partnered with our communities and our faith community for that. In 2019, will be even a stronger focus in housing. And I would really appreciate, I think, in conversations, to have the Dakota County Community Development Agency come to either a meeting or a workshop to have further discussions as they are the city of Hastings housing authority in conjunction with HEDRA. So we have some opportunities to work better on that and I would love to bring the expertise of the CDA staff with that. Then with our budget for next year, we are eliminating the regional rail levy. That was probably about $8 on your average household. And that levy, as we got out of the County Transit Improvement Board and took over the sales tax, we were able to go and say that we really did not need that tax for what we are doing for transit in the county. So it's always nice when you can cut a tax. And this was, though not a large one, it's still nice to be able to eliminate that. Going on to our budget for that we will be approving tomorrow, it's a $409.5 million budget. As we go, about two-thirds of that is in the operating side of it. One-third of it is in capital improvement projects on that. But just to share with you with that, we'll once again be continuing in 2019 to be debt-free. So we will not have any debt as a county. We'll still have the lowest tax rate in the metro area and this right here, which I've shown you, and the numbers are getting wider in between us and Kuchichin County, but the total talk, total property tax levy per person, that gap is going in between. So of all 87 counties, the lowest per county is actually Dakota County, once again. This will be for the fourth year with that. Thought I would share just the impact on the city of Hastings, very briefly on you. City of Hastings had one of the larger increases in valuations. The average was about 8% and this went above the average on this. So in 2017, the average home was roughly 214,000 and the average home in 2018 is 232,000 before exclusions. So about an 8.49% increase on that. And what that means for your tax rate is actually, even with the average home, would be a reduction in tax rate of 1.2 or 4.5%. But the estimated taxes for the county portion, as many people have seen, for the average home in the city of Hastings, goes up by about $26.5% to $546.91. And with that, that's the last of what I have. I really greatly appreciate the opportunity to come here once a year and just give an update as well as any other workshops that I've been able to attend throughout the year. And I'm certainly available by email or phone if something comes up. Otherwise, if there's any questions for tonight, I'd certainly take them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for that presentation. Councilors, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate your visit every year, keeping us updated, and keep doing the fine job you're doing for the people of Hastings and all District One.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, we have before us seemingly the minutes of the regular city council meeting and workshop of December 3rd, 2018. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of those meetings? Seeing none, they stand approved. We'll go to council items agenda, or council items to be considered. Any additional, Councilmember Foalch?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, I was going to ask if we could bring back onto the agenda consideration of a city ordinance that would possibly raise the age to purchase tobacco. We had the discussion in the past.
I can talk about that perhaps under comments or with Councilmember Brock.
Is that in committee?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock, is that in public safety?
Yes. The Public Safety Advisory Commission has been entertaining that concept and discussing what the parameters of a draft ordinance would be. Once they're done reviewing and recommending at their January meeting, which I believe is January 17th, then that would come to either the council or to the Public Safety Committee of the council to review the ordinance and then bring it forward to full council.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember? Okay. Thank you very much. Melanie?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilweed would request addition of item number four under administration, which would be mayoral recognition, please.
Do I get the vote on that?
If you're acceptable to that, of course.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll go to consent agenda. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes motion to approve. Seconded by Councilmember Balsanic. That motion is before the bodies. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next on the agenda is under awarding of contracts, a public hearing. There's a public hearing ordinance amendment, the adjustment of utility rate fees. And Melanie?
Thank you, Your Honor and council. You're asked to conduct a public hearing tonight and consider an attached ordinance amendment adjusting the city's utility fees. As you're well aware, in 2016, we worked with Ellers on a utility rate study to position the city to prepare a long-term sustainable utilities, utility fund structure. And we implemented a rate restructure in July of 2017. Our, as a reminder, our fees are adjusted by ordinance, so that's why this is before you tonight, a public hearing. Within the 2019 budget, staff is recommending a 5% increase in the water rates, a 3% increase in sewer, and a 3% increase in the stormwater fund. These have been discussed with the Finance Committee and is included with the 2019 budget. As the council has requested, staff is monitoring the utility rate funds, utility funds closely and we expect that we'll do another analysis in 2020. So with that, I ask you to hold a public hearing and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing. Does anyone here would like to speak to that issue? Please. Welcome to the council meeting. Nick, very glad to have you here. Please give us your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Tuckner, I live at 647 Sixth Street West here in Hastings. And before I get started, I too want to thank Mayor Hicks for all of his years of service here over a quarter century. That's very special and I just want to thank you for everything you've done for all of us here over the years and hopefully you have, like many others were saying, a very restful, relaxful retirement here as you move on to whatever is next. Regarding the fees here tonight, folks, as council especially, the reason I'm here tonight is just being a concerned citizen. I realize that this fee structure is over a certain eight-year plan or whatever it might be. Right now, in 2018, we've gone through a serious situation with our water system being the E. coli scenario that still has not been solved. For two months, it's been the same chlorinated water. No fix, no news on the fix, or no news that where this study is at. These two months, we've been buying bottled water at $1 a jug, $4 a 24-pack. You multiply that times the bodies in your house, plus pets, amounts of days in a month, and it's not cheap. We're at the point where our family is shopping around for water. We even travel to Menards and Cottage Grove because you can get a three-pack of water for $2.48 and not $3. Is that right? Is that acceptable? Though you may say it's safe, and the Department of Health may say the water is safe to drink, it's not what we want. If it's not what we want, what are we paying for? If you go to a fast food restaurant, you order a hamburger with no pickles. It comes back with pickles. You can pick the pickles off and move on with your life. You go to Taco Bell, you buy a Crunchwrap, it's all together. You can't take the stuff out of it, can you? It's kind of a funny analogy. I like food, but it's true. You can't take it out of there. Same with our water right now. We can't take the chlorine out of our water at this time because there's still an E. coli situation going on. We've been told to purchase filters for $40 each to put onto our tap or costly complete water filtration systems for our homes if we don't like the smell or taste. That same Menard store I mentioned earlier up the road, almost $600 for the cheapest model of filtration. I can't afford either. So now what? I don't have the time when I'm raking my yard to put water in a pitcher for 24 hours and wait for the chlorine smell to just go away. This is no time for new fees. This is no time for new taxes and I know this is a fee and not a tax in all truthfulness. My home that was purchased six years ago is now worth nearly double of what it was back then. My county taxes have also reflected the increased value in our home. Extra money out of pocket. Along with the increases, we were also responsible for more city taxes after a $6,000 assessment for road repair, which were also needed and that's just fine. We accepted those fees as anybody else does when they get assessed. But again, an added expense out of pocket. Tax, fee, it means the same to many. It's more money out of our pockets and I, like many others who were able to afford their houses when they were cheap six years ago, have been virtually taxed and feed out of their own homes. This fee increase comes at a time when families are spending anywhere between $25 and $50 per month in drinking water and can't take another increase. $25 to $50 per month equates to $75 to $150 per water bill cycle that we're spending. spending on drinking water that we should be having provided without chlorination or any added filtration. If we weren't spending that $75 to $150 every three months on drinking water, then a fee would be more palatable for everybody. This was decided before the E. coli situation, I understand, and that's fine. That, however, is not a problem for the constituents of Hastings to worry about. At that time in particular, there should have been some sort of emergency council meeting or evaluation that took place to put a freeze or hold on any water increases until the situation is figured out, or at least we have a situation that is ready to go. Realize this, that many are seeing that the temporary chlorination is a cheap Band-Aid that is coming off real fast. The biofilm excuse for the chlorination smell has now worn well past its expiration date. A solution needs to come sooner rather than later. I'm here tonight to ask the council to table the voting of the fee increases regarding water. Sewage, stormwater, I can accept that. We're getting those services as we paid for them. But for the water, the fees should stay the same rate as 2018 until a solution is provided for our drinking water. Is it inconvenient for the council and others working for the city? Absolutely. But it is doing the right thing and getting us closer to a solution more promptly. It's very important, as it should be. Please consider tabling this issue for now. The taxpayers and the fee payers and the City of Hastings would appreciate you taking action immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else who would like to speak for the House of Seattle? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, let's take this issue up. It's number one under administration. Counsel, what's your wish? Do we have a comment? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Getting used to the new technology here.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you gentlemen for your comments because I think that there are many people within the community who have the same sentiment. I had a few folks, you know, contact me and actually verbalize much of the same concerns that you just did. And so I want you to know that we understand completely what you're saying, and I've been saying it for the last few months myself, that it really is a major inconvenience and it makes our lives difficult. I have shared the story about my own youngest boy refuses to drink the water and I had to go get a Brita filter, filter, yeah, jug for my refrigerator and it is really an inconvenience every time we want to, you know, have dinner, we have to then refill it, and so it is making life difficult. I understand completely. When you recognize the fact that the city council, we have been going through this planning process and we had a lot of consideration of this and it was 2017, wasn't it? It was last year when we first made this decision. And so you're right, you know, we have been planning for this. And so although we all completely sympathize with what's going on with the water situation, the fact is we still have to pay for our water system, our drinking water system. And so it's a little different from when, you know, you go to Target, you know, and you're upset with something and you go and you ask for a refund or you ask for a discount or something of that matter, where they will make an accommodation for you. In this case, we own the water system and so one way or another, we have to pay for it and we can't really give refunds or discounts or things of that nature. And so, so we do so greatly appreciate everyone in the community's patience with the issue and I, and I do, I do sympathize and I do understand because we're all in the same boat together and so none of us, you know, take this issue lightly. I know we've all had many conversations with constituents about it. And so, so with that said, it does put us in a predicament where we do need to move this forward because we need to plan for the future and we need to be able to sustain the water system and so that Nick Egger, our Public Works Director, just last, two weeks ago, had provided an update that the engineering firm who's been charged with reviewing, you know, and conducting the analysis of our water system and what to do has already provided a rough draft in that it's currently being reviewed and that he plans to bring that forward, I think at our first meeting in January, so that we'll hear, you know, what it is that they're proposing. I know that originally it was stated that they had hoped that it would have been ready here in December so that we could have, you know, included in this planning process. And one of the questions that I had later for the budget was just how are we planning for that, you know, in case they do have recommendations for us, you know, for implementation that may have a cost, like how are we taking that into consideration? So I thank you, I thank you for your concerns, I really do, and I, and I know that we're all in the same predicament. We all just want to, you know, have the best for our city and move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Housemember. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, thanks for coming down today. And Nick and I talked on the phone about this. I just want, want some clarification that when I first got on the council, we, I seen some graphs that were showing our utility funds going the wrong way. They were not sustained. So it's been a difficult decision that alone to say we need to implement something, we need to get these funds stabilized for our community to make sure that we have safe drinking water, sewer and water, everything to go with it. So that's a decision that I think we're voting on tonight. I think, and I think we'll see it, like Councilmember Foltz said, in quarter one of 2019, Nick Egger's going to bring some stuff to us that's going to say, all right, now let's address our E. coli issue that we had and how are we going to address that going forward. So I think, I just want to clarify, we're kind of getting two different items here. I think tonight we're voting on trying to stabilize a fund, but I think understanding where the residents are coming from, quarter one is when we should be getting after our other thing that staff's been working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick, for your comments. I certainly understand the frustration. I've heard from residents here, you know, we've had such great water all these years and now we are faced with the situation that we are in. But public safety is our number one concern and we need to make sure that the water that we are supplying to the residents of our great city is safe. We are practicing, and I know you've questioned to a certain degree, but we are practicing the model of safe water. And the water in Hastings is safe and we are putting in the, you know, we can put up a, what, four points per million of chlorine. We've chosen just to use one part per billion to do the system. So we're trying to take the steps necessary to use the lowest doses that we can. Water, not only in Hastings, but all across Minnesota is becoming an issue. Water quality is becoming an issue in our state and you're going to see a lot more money being invested in our water. And, you know, one of the things that these fees help us do is something that we don't talk about anymore just because we're continuing to keep working on it, and Nick knows this well, is the nitrates in our water. And because of the situation we are in Dakota County, we have a treatment plant that is, you know, handling that issue. We have to monitor our nitrates and keep that under safe levels. And so more than just the E. coli, which is a very serious issue, we have other issues threatening our water supply. These fees help continue to be able to maintain our ability to keep water quality sound as best we know with the latest technology. And you're right, Nick, in the sense that people need to know the explanations of what this fund is going toward. And so not only is it infrastructure, but we all have, we have other issues that we have to deal with water quality as most other municipalities in the state are dealing with. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Counsel, I'll accept the motion. Councilmember Balsanik makes the motion, approve, seconded by Councilmember Brock. Is there any additional comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have under Public Works, or excuse me, we have Community Development, a resolution before the city council on the landscape and photometric plan approval, the Great River Landing, the former Hudson Manufacturing. John, welcome to our meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of City Council. So I'm here tonight to present these two, the last pieces of the Great River Land, the landscape plan and the photometric plan approval. I'll go through a little bit of some of the items that we got to this place today and then the item that we have before us tonight. With Great River Landing, that is the Hudson property, 4.3 acre site, 100,000 square foot build, as you can see on the screen here. This has been a project in which the city has been involved in various stages for about 10 years, from the acquisition of the property, the sale of the property, planning of what would be going on there, to ultimately a development contract and a building permit being submitted just recently. What we have before us tonight is the landscape plan and photometric plan approval. Now, when we go back, we had land use approvals about three years ago in the fall of 2015 for the site plan and plating of the property. At that point, the landscape plan was not yet complete and so we held off bringing those forward until tonight. And so what I'd like to do is run through what we have for the landscape plan, and we also have representatives from Confluence Development here who can help us out as well with any questions. So the Hudson site, as you're all aware, the landscape plan itself. On the landscape plan, there will be a number of plantings that'll be going on to transform the riverfront into a park. You may recall that this area here was once the home of a 48,000 square foot tip-up building that created a wall between the river and downtown. With the demolition of that project, we have opened up space over here and the developer has taken advantage of that to create a nice open space area with plantings around it. And so what we have is invigorated open spaces within that property and for the city's standpoint, these will be privately maintained but subject to a public use agreement. So we will get the benefits of the public space and Confluence will have the burden of taking care of things for us. So that's a, that's a good deal for us. And so with the landscape plan, there's a couple of things that we're looking at. Number one, existing vegetation, and number two, some of the minimum requirements we have for plantings. As you recall, within the plan itself, there are a number of trees that are on the edges of the property, particularly around the northwest side here and along the riverfront trail. Now with the trail itself, there's planting of about 14 trees there that will be removed as part of this project. The removal is due to a couple of different factors and I think probably the best way to show this is just remembering back to what used to be there. When the trail was first developed, it was developed as an easement through a corridor in the back of a manufacturing plant. We had a large tip-up building there. We wanted to be able to screen the trail from the industrial activities. And so the purpose of those trees when they were planted 20 years ago was to, was to do that. The trail itself was developed early on in our process at a width that was not what we would build trails to today. And so there's a desire for us to widen the trail and a desire for us to connect this trail to downtown Hastings into the park. Today, these trees here serve as a barrier between the trail system and the building itself. With the landscape plan being brought forward today, it'll provide an openness. The park itself will transform from the river into the site and around with the different amenities that are being planned within the site. So there is tree loss that we will be taking on in this project itself. We do have a tree preservation policy which dictates that certain tree plantings would need to take place to compensate for that and the developer will meet that within the site itself. With the other aspect of what we're doing tonight, that's the photometric plan, the lighting plan, we have specific requirements for foot candle illumination at property lines, which the property meets itself, so we are supportive of that as well. So that is the project that we're looking forward to seeing here. As I said earlier, the building permits have been submitted for the project, which is great. They're currently under review before our building department and we hope to have those issued shortly so that construction can continue on. Along with this project, the parking ramp across the street is also under construction. You may have noticed today that some of the tip-up work has been going on there. So the transformation of this project, which has been long underway for some time and with great help from the mayor's leadership and the rest of the council, will see coming to fruition here shortly. So I want to thank you for your leadership, thank you for your support of this project, and stand for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, John. Counsel, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve the landscape and photometric plan approval, seconded by Councilmember Lung. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to the motion. Is there any further discussion to the motion? I just want to make a special note, I want to thank the developer for working hard on this. This was not an easy process for them. It's a very complex project and I remember starting this thing in 2010 when we acquired this building and we had great plans for it. And you know what? It happened. And thanks to Mr. Regan and Great Rivers Group and Mr. Wilden from Louisville, Kentucky, we have before us a wonderful development. And I am very pleased tonight that before I leave this chair, that I'm able to vote on the last measure of it. I'm very proud of the work that's done by the developer. I'm very proud of you, John, and your work, that with all the environmental analysis that had to be done and the planning that had to be done. Counsel, outstanding leadership, way to stick with it. This was not an easy project to follow along and I'm very pleased with everyone's leadership. We do have the motion before us. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the 2019 budget.
Your Honor and Counsel, you're asked to approve three resolutions tonight. Following the public hearing two weeks ago for a truth in taxation public hearing, staff presented a 2019 budget and summary. And I will be happy to answer any questions, but I know we've talked about this at length for a number of months. So we'd like to thank the Finance Committee and the council for their leadership developing the budget, as well as our staff, specifically Julie and Mel Lammers in the Finance Department for pulling it all together. Members of the public can pull, can review our full budget book on our website, as well as a Budget at a Glance, that's a kind of a condensed version that our staff has put together. And we also have our 2019 to 2023 capital improvement and capital equipment plans all on our website. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Counsel, we have before us the first resolution, the 2019 final budget, final levy. I'll seek a motion. Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is before us. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Vaughn, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I just wanted to put a bug in my colleagues' ears heading into 2019. I think I'll be asking staff if they could review the two-year budget cycle. I do it at the employment I have now. I think it's something we should at least look at to help us with some forecasting and hopefully I'll get your support, but I'll bring it forward in the first quarter of 2019 to ask staff to look at a two-year budget cycle.
Okay. We have a motion before us. Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with you, Councilmember Vaughn. I think that that's a wonderful idea. And when I look at the CIP, I feel that some of the planning is perhaps a little light. In particular, when I'm looking at the Parks and Recreation budget, there were two projects that I have been advocating for, one of which is placement of a park in the Glendale Voyager Parkway neighborhood that's at the end of Spiral Boulevard. And, and we've had discussion about this recently because there is a large apartment complex that went in and I know that there has been consideration by the Parks and Rec Commission on this particular issue and, but we haven't, we haven't really had any movement on it. Other than that, I was hoping that the Parks and Rec Committee of the council would be hearing it soon. But I'm just, I'm concerned that it's not mentioned at all within the CIP. I know that there were park dedication monies that were set aside from that apartment complex for the project. I was told at one point that Ward One did have a little bit of a slush fund set aside for Parks and Rec for the future from other dedication fees that were brought forward. And so I'm just concerned, I'm concerned that we don't see that mentioned within the CIP. And then another issue was the East Side Association over in Cowtown. They had been advocating for a shelter to be placed at Lake Isabel and they were willing to also, you know, put forward probably a large amount of the money to pay for the shelter and I don't see that mentioned in here either. There is a line item for Lake Isabel for the basketball court resurfacing, which was only $5,000. And so just to see, you know, again, you know, that there's planning that's being taken, you know, for these requests from these unique neighborhoods. And so I just say that- And so I just say that in moving forward, I hope that, it would be really nice to move to a two-year budget cycle, but then also have more of a thorough review of CIP items moving five years out, because if you look at the CIP, we're kind of light once you get to 2021, '22 and moving forward. So, I would just, so I was hoping that that would have actually have been within the CIP, and I know we weren't planning on, you know, implementing in 2019, but I would have at a minimum asked for it to have been in 2020 and within the plans here. And I would really love to actually see it get moved up into 2019. I know it's probably too late to change the budget document right now, but for as we move forward, if we could, maybe again in the first quarter, address this issue about making sure that the funding is there for these parks, because the residents have been very vocal, and they're very patient in waiting for that. So, thank you.
Go back to the final budget, final levy. Any further discussion on that? Okay? All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the special levy. That's the HEDRA levy. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Bolsoniak makes that motion approve, seconded by Councilmember Leifeld. That motion is before the body. Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Then next is the 2019 Capital Improvement and Capital Equipment Plan. Councilmember Foltz.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. She makes a motion with her comments as to this plan, right?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay. And I'll seek a second. Councilmember Leifeld seconds that motion. Any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next, appointment of interim city administrator. Melanie?
Thank you, Your Honor and Counsel. The meeting two weeks ago, you accepted my resignation effective January 4th, and following that meeting, or at that meeting, the council referred this issue of city administrator vacancy to the admin committee of the council chaired by Councilmember Brockes and then Councilmembers Foltz and Lund. The committee did have a meeting where they talked about a number of things related to the vacancy, and one of them was the unanimous recommendation to appoint Julie Flatner, our administrative services director, appointed as interim city administrator effective January 5th, 2019, with a corresponding compensation adjustment. So, that is the recommendation of the committee. I think that's a fine recommendation. It's a good recommendation. I would encourage your support of that. The admin committee is continuing to meet. They will next talk about the job description and then kind of the parameters under which they want to hire a recruitment firm. And for the public, if you're looking for any information about the process, it is available all on our website. If you go under the administration section, there's a whole section that Lee has set up that has the committee minutes and those summaries and all that information that we have shared with the council. So, with that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Lund makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brockes. That motion is before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say, excuse me, I'll hold. Councilmember Lund.
I just wanted to test out the microphone before the night was over.
Make sure it's working.
Yeah, it sounds good. No, just real quickly, I mean, we spent a great deal of time discussing this, and I want to reiterate, I said in the last meeting that we're not going to drag our feet, but we're also not going to just run and get this over with as quickly as possible. This is a very, very important role for the city, probably a very long-term position for the city, so we need to stick the landing on this, and we're going to do our best as a committee to continue that effort. It's, there are big shoes to fill, and we believe that Julie will do an excellent job making sure that we don't miss any beats along the way, so that we're not spending our time trying to find the best interim person so that we can find the best long-term person. So, that's, that was my big takeaway there, was this was a good solution to make sure that the wheels keep turning really well while we find that long-term solution. So, rest assured, we're going to continue to work towards that, and I look forward to working with Julie until that time.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate a little bit of what Trevor said, and also that we realized that if we had wanted to hire an interim, then the whole process on the front end now would have to be very quick. And we felt that the best process would be a long, deliberate, intentional process with lots of feedback from different stakeholders, from city staff, from members of the public, from people who interact with someone in this role. And so we felt that the short-term, the best short-term solution, and for the city to continue operationally, was to have Julie be the interim to run the operations of the city, and then we would have time to go through the process of being intentional, deliberative, and choosing somebody who we thought was a good fit, not only meets all the qualifications, but fits the culture of the city of Hastings, can put forth a vision, be in agreement with the mayoral vision that's, I'm sure, coming forward. So, we have a lot of factors to consider, and so we thought that this was the best way to proceed, and we hope that everyone finds some wisdom in that. And if you have any questions about the process, or you want to talk about things that you would like to input into the process, the administrative committee is always willing to receive your calls, your emails, contact us, reach out to us, and let us know if you have any feedback, and we're happy to talk to you.
Is there any further? Seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay? Next was added on to the agenda.
Yeah. I'm a voter of the lectern.
All right.
Ask if I need to join you in the minute here.
Okay, sounds good.
Actually, I'd want the management team to come and join me first, if you don't mind. Management team first, so. John and Nick and, yeah, come on up, you guys. I know, I know. Yeah, you didn't vote on this? All right. As you're walking up here. Last week, we, as you know, we had a fabulous reception for Mayor Hicks, and we heard about all the great things he's done for the last 28 years, and he's, how well, how much we regard him in his years of service. And tonight, we just want to take a couple minutes before the last meeting of the year. And often, when people think about the city, certain images come to mind, you know, public safety or Parks and Rec. Sometimes, every once in a while, we might get a complaint or two, but not real often. But what most people may not think about is the culture, the culture of our organization. And we've got a very strong, good organizational culture, and I think it's in no small part to your involvement, Mayor Hicks. With your day job, you get it. You understand the role of staff. You understand the importance of developing effective relationships, and, you know, honoring the different roles that we all have to play to move things forward in the community. And, you know, before we wrote down those core values, I think you embody them. So, when I get to talk to my colleagues and elected and appointed throughout the state, you know, I've been proud to say I get to work with you. People know who you are. You have a reputation, you know, for leading with integrity, treating people well, just really respecting the process. And Hastings has been really lucky to have that, because people notice. It's something worth protecting. In our little governance world, we know what cities are operating well, and we know which cities are having a little bit of trouble. And Hastings has a good reputation. We have a reputation of operating well, treating people respectfully, and that's leading by example. So, that's something to be proud of. That's something to protect for all of our elected officials and our staff. So, you know I have to weave in a quote, presidential quote, so.
I love it.
Thomas Jefferson, I changed it up this time. "In matters of style, swim with the current; in matters of principle, stand like a rock." I think that really embodies a good way of how you think about elected office and how you've, and how you've lived your life in elected office with us. So, in honor of that, our staff helped us put together, you've already seen this, but we're going to put it for the public to see it. If you can help me hold this, please, folks. We've got an image of kind of some big iconic projects that you've been a part of. It's an arrow, and we've got the River Bridge here, and we've got, of course, Riverfront Renaissance. If you look way back here, we've got this ugly little Hudson Building that's going to be renovated here soon.
Excellent.
And we paired it with the Athenian Oath, and I'm not going to read it, but if you know the Athenian Oath, it's an ancient oath, and it's basically a statement of civic virtue, honoring, bringing honor to public service. So, I don't try to speak for our management team too often, but I'm going to try to tonight, so I'm going to just thank you. Thanks for leading with integrity. Thanks for conducting meetings with diplomacy and grace, and thank you for showing respect for staff.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Let me get out of the middle here, Paul.
Yeah, no, I don't like that.
Well, we want, we want the management team. Yeah, we want, we want the management team here.
Let's go to the management team, then point with everybody. Counsel. Yeah, yeah. Stay after, Counsel. Hold team. Let's get the whole team.
I'm not standing next to the chief.
You see Chris?
Your Honor, I'll ask you to stay down here with me.
Four years ago, I got introduced to the proclamation. And tonight, I think we get to recognize, our colleagues get to recognize you, Mayor, for your civic contributions for that. So, we're going to read a proclamation for you. We'll start with Lori Brockes, please.
Whereas Mayor Paul J. Hicks first began to serve the Hastings community on the Natural Resources and Recreation Commission in 1984, a role he held until being elected as an at-large council member in 1990, where he served four terms before being elected as mayor of the city of Hastings in 2006, and has been mayor the last 12 years, and.
Whereas Mayor Hicks was instrumental in ensuring that impactful projects came to fruition, such as the construction of the Hastings Family Aquatic Center, renovation of the Dakota County Courthouse, the second-oldest courthouse in the state of Minnesota.
Thank you for putting that in there.
To the City Hall, the new Highway 61 Bridge, the longest freestanding tide arch bridge in North America.
Like that fact?
And the Hudson Sprayer Building redevelopment and the Riverfront Renaissance, and.
Whereas Mayor Hicks has demonstrated leadership and diplomacy in all matters, brought before him, whether routine or necessitating much discussion and deliberation, and.
Whereas, and you're going to love what we put in on this one. Throughout his tenure, Mayor Hicks always had a welcoming demeanor, courteous tone, and made residents feel welcome to share feedback on community matters, whether in the city council chambers or in the grocery store.
I do, I do.
Whereas Mayor Hicks has demonstrated unquestionable integrity in leading as an elected official, and has always shown respect for his city council colleagues as well as the city staff who have had the opportunity to work with him.
Now, therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Hastings on the 17th day of December 2018 that we are just about fully informed, and hereby extend a heartfelt recognition and appreciation for Mayor Paul J. Hicks, 28 years as an elected official, and note that Hastings is a better community as a result of your leadership and service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're not ready yet. We're getting close. I set your microphone up. Yeah, that might be hard to do. We're going to give my colleagues some chance to say a few parting words as we get closer to the end here, so we'll start over here with Councilmember Brockes, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. And I just want to say, Mayor, in 1990, I was in sixth grade. But in all seriousness, I want to thank you for your leadership. I know I've already said some words at your open house, and I just want to thank you for your example, for your leadership, and especially for the way that you run a meeting. That's one of the ways that I hope that I'll remember you most is for the order and the decorum that you've run our meetings with. And also, I feel that you've always given me the freedom to be the council member that I need to be and want to be. I don't feel like we always have agreed, but many times, we've had really good conversations. And I remember one time, I was really wrestling with something, and you told me that I should do what I felt was right in my heart, and I really appreciate that. I really have appreciated your, watching your career and just observing you, and I will miss you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaughn.
So, two years ago, I happily took responsibility to work for and represent the community that I love, and it's been a really rewarding opportunity. But as a new guy on a new council, never done this before, no one said it was going to be easy, and it hasn't been easy. But I had you as an example of leadership, knowledge, showing how to be respectful and honorable, and you had a lot of passion. And so I've gained so much and so quickly that it was to the benefit of me and to the whole city that you, that you were that leader for me. So, on my list of people who have had a valuable impact and impression on my life, Paul Hicks will forever have a place, and I thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Leifeld.
All right. Mayor Hicks, I want to thank you, obviously your dedication to the city of Hastings, the great people, what you've done. Not a lot of people can say they've accomplished what you've accomplished and loved so fiercely a community as much as you have, and I thank you as a community member. But as a council member, I want to say thank you for the encouragement, the support that you've given me specifically over the last two years. As Councilmember Lund stated, nobody said it was going to be easy, but you have made the path much smoother, giving us each our own voice and encouraging us to, to say what we need to say, even when we don't necessarily agree. But I do want to thank you for the friendship over the last 15 years that you and Suzie and Heidi and I, that we've cultivated, and always answering the phone. And I'll never, ever forget the day that you married my mother-in-law and my.
I remember.
And my, her new husband in the rotunda here. She, my mother-in-law, called and said, Lisa, we want to get married in Hastings, and do you know any of these judges? And I'm like, well, I happen to know the mayor. So, and that was before I was elected, and Paul came right down and married them in the rotunda, and it's something I'm never going to forget, and those are things that, those are friendships, and I really want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolsoniak.
I can't think of anybody that deserves the title more than you do of the title, "Your When I ran for council a few years ago, I kept looking for, you know, when I was door-knocking, okay, what's, what's going on? What's everybody want to know about? And, you know, what's, what are the complaints and so forth? And I kept getting these comments that, you know, the city's really running pretty well, and that's a darn good council over there. So, we really do appreciate everything that they're doing. Well, I got elected, and my first meeting was with our former city administrator, Dave Osbert, and he sat me down in his office. He said, well, Joe, tell me, what's.
So two years ago, I happily took responsibility to work for and represent the community that I love, and it's been a really rewarding opportunity, but as a new guy, on a new council, never done this before, no one said it was going to be easy, and it hasn't been easy. But I had you as an example of leadership, knowledge, showing how to be respectful and honorable, and you had a lot of passion. And, and so I've gained so much and so quickly that it was to the benefit of me and to the whole city that you, that you were that leader for me. So on my list of people who have had a valuable impact and impression on my life, Paul Hicks will forever have a place, and I thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Hicks, I want to thank you. Obviously, your dedication to the city of Hastings, the great people, what you've done. Not a lot of people can say they've accomplished what you've accomplished and loved so fiercely a community as much as you have. And I thank you as a community member. But as a council member, I want to say thank you for the encouragement, the support that you've given me specifically over the last two years. As Councilmember Lund stated, nobody said it was going to be easy, but you have made the path much smoother, giving us each our own voice and encouraging us to, to say what we need to say, even when we don't necessarily agree. But I, I do want to thank you for the friendship over the last 15 years that you and Suzie and Heidi and I, that we've cultivated, and always answering the phone, and I'll never, ever forget the day that you married my mother-in-law and my...
I remember.
And my, her new husband, in the rotunda here. She, my mother-in-law called and said, Lisa, we want to get married in Hastings, and do you know any of these judges? And I'm like, well, I happen to know the mayor. So, and that was before I was elected, and Paul came right down and married them in the rotunda. And it's something I'm never going to forget, and those are things that, those are friendships, and I really want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't think of anybody that deserves the title more than you do of the title,
"Your Honor." When I ran for, for council a few years ago, I kept looking for, you know, when I was door knocking, okay, what's, what's going on? What's everybody want to know about? And, you know, what's, what are the complaints and so forth? And I kept getting these comments that, you know, the city's really running pretty well, and that's a darn good council over there. So we really do appreciate everything that they're doing. Well, I got elected, and my first meeting was with our former city administrator, Dave Osberg, and he sat me down in his office. He says, well, Joe, tell me, what's, what's the word out there? You know, what are people wanting to get done, and, you know, what are their complaints and so forth? And I said, you know what? This city is really great. It's running very, very well, and there's a great deal of respect for the city council and the city staff. The one thing that I, the one thing that I really appreciate that you've done for me as a city council member is that you respected my creative approach to the thinking that, that I've brought before the city council. And that takes somebody with a very astute sense of what is going on, and for that, I am very, very grateful. I'm going to repeat a couple of things here that I talked about the other night. I thought that was going to be a roast, by the way. And I had a whole different speech that, that I was ready to give. I'm not going to do it here. But, but usually when somebody spends as much time as they have in a position of authority, there is a roast, and, and maybe someday we'll have one. We'll, we'll have to see. But, you know, I had said, that there were three things that a mayor should know how to do. A good mayor, I said, knows how to run a meeting. And you certainly knew and know how to run a meeting, and you have kept things running very smoothly, which brings to mind then that, that, you know, what does a great mayor do? Well, a great mayor knows what to say, and a great mayor knows when to say it. And there have been so many occasions when you did both of those, and I cannot recall any time when you said something that you shouldn't have. And we're all very proud to have served with you in that capacity, with your knowledge and, and your great perspective on that. And then the last one, which we kind of, you've got to get my quote in here. The last one, as I said, an outstanding mayor, and we could probably all say this together, always knows when to say, "I believe we are now fully informed." And so with that, I thank you. It has been a, a true pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Councilmember Fultz.
Joe, how am I going to top that? For crying out loud, man. Right? Yeah, okay. Well, I, I said a lot of this just last week at your reception, but, you know, Paul, you just, I'm in awe of you so many times. I, I think what really strikes me as the most amazing thing about you is that you have such a positive energy about you, and you bring that forward with amazing grace and kindness. And I'm sure we've all heard the same, you know, echoing messages here through our comments, but it's so true. And also, you just have this natural ability to actively listen to folks, and they know that you're listening, and you make them feel unique and important when you do that. And I try so hard to learn from you in doing that, so thank you for those lessons. You've been such a wonderful mentor to me and to the others. I mean, Commissioner Slavik has said the same. You have left such a, you know, imprint on our lives. And so I said this at the reception last week, that those of us who know you, know you don't do it for the celebrity, and we know you don't do it for the money. And so, you know, I believe that you do it because you love all of us, and we're always in your heart, and so thank you for that. You really are the best. You're made of gold. I say that all the time. So, thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. I'd like to invite up Dave Osberg, our former city administrator, has a few words to say, too.
Smart city administrator recalls the emphasis on the word "few." I know what's standing before you tonight, the mayor talking, and probably a trip downtown. So I'll be brief, and you are fully informed. I came here for two reasons tonight, and I don't want to underestimate my first reason for coming here tonight, and that's to recognize Melanie Mescol Lee and congratulate her on becoming the next city manager for the city of Burnsville. Nearly 20 years or so ago, she came in as the admini... We had like seven titles in your, in your job description, and now you're leaving here tonight as the city administrator for the city of Hastings. I know I can speak confidently, confidently for all of our colleagues in Dakota County, that we're excited to know you will continue your commitment in local government here in Dakota County, as you're an excellent city administrator here in Hastings, and you will be in Burnsville. And even further, the city administrators, the Minnesota City Management Association know you're one of the best, and I want to congratulate you on your tenure here in Hastings, not only as city administrator, but your titles you had prior to that. Mayor Hicks, congratulate. 28 years. I'll never forget the morning, I think it was November 7th, 1990.
After the election?
Yeah, it was the day after election, and it was a little bit of a contentious election, and if I can indulge a little bit, there were three on that, on that ballot, including the mayor, and then, then became councilmember Hicks, and some others who, quite honestly, if the election would have been a little bit different, I don't know that I would have been standing here 24 years later. I remember going downstairs in our house, then on 21st Street, in 1990, we only had two kids. The way you learned of election results at the time, to go down on cable TV, it was a big deal. And there down the election results, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, I woke up, and I got to find out who they all won. And I saw your name, Mayor Warner became the mayor, and Fred Trautman was reelected, and I thought, what a great day. So that was a great day. And then several years later, when you became mayor. I had the dignity, or the honor of working with you for 22 years, both on the mayor, as mayor and city council. And as many have said here, so I'm, I'm going to repeat it and do it quickly, did it with class, dignity, and humility, all traits that we should all try and symbolize in our work, our public service, and our daily lives. Mayor and I had lunch the other day, and we talked about some of the old days, including that story, and how some young city administrator wanted to keep the parking lot out here.
Yep.
And, and every year, I'd call the mayor at about April or so, looking out the office that, that is the city administrator's office, like, "Mayor, how are you? Good, good." We'd talk about the twins, whatnot, and I'd say, "Just want to let you know, that grass is looking pretty green there. I'm glad you didn't make a parking lot out of it."
I remember that day. Well...
So, so I want to conclude by saying congratulations, Paul, and most importantly, thank you for being a friend. The work you did for the city of Hastings and the friendship you provided many will always have a lasting impact. Well done, my friend, and well done, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dave.
Well, they've used every word I had written down here. I'm still going to, I'm still going to give a, it's been great. I mean, these great tributes and messages that we've heard in the last week, or even since you announced back in the summer that you weren't going to step away from public service. I'd like to share my story, my first one-on-one meeting with Mayor Hicks. I still remember, I was shortly elected, you invited me down to your office here at city hall. You're very welcoming, comforting, we had a great conversation going, and I could see you were setting up your recommendations for committee of councils. And he had, did his homework, you could see, he knew what I did, and where, he was trying to make the best picture for everybody. I was, I said, and then he asked me, "Well, what do you want to be on?" I'm like, oh, I'm the freshman, Your Honor. Put me wherever you want. It's time for me to learn. That was the first...
I think you regretted that one, probably.
That's where the word "education" came in, because I give him credit. Everything that I just heard today, you educated us. You said, no, you, you earned that spot. You earned that certificate, and we earned the oath of representing the people. That meant a lot to me today. Our conversation kept going. We got to, got to the point where we were saying, all right, now when we have a council meeting, remember, I'm green. You made a very good point, and it still sticks with me today. You said, we will respect, I heard that word today, the chamber, the Diaz. When we're in here, things are in order. You will respect the process. Again, there's a reason that these city council meetings go so well, and the city runs so well. Chief Schaefer put in that video, cities are envy of us, and I give you credit for that, because I think it was your leadership that kind of helped us through that. So you've been respected as a leader, you lead by example. We've heard all these things tonight. Two years ago, you asked me to be your acting mayor. I appreciate it whenever you weren't around. That was a big honor for me. I'm lucky enough, on behalf of our council and on behalf of the residents, you earned this gavel. You had 12 years of moving this city forward.
I love that gavel.
You don't get it yet. 12 years you moved this city forward with this gavel, and 28 years in public service. Our residents of Hastings say thank you for that. I personally, I, I think you're a great colleague, you're a great mentor, but friend, just like Dave said. Appreciate everything. Good luck in return.
Oh, I get to do it a couple more times. That feels good, doesn't it? Well, thank you, everybody. And, you know, we did have that wonderful celebration on, on Wednesday night, and I really appreciated that on Wednesday. So I've, I've got an abbreviated version tonight, because I know we have other things going on. First of all, I want to say this, I love everybody in this room. Thank you, everybody. You know, you don't do public service and, and the goals of a community by yourself. You can't do it by yourself. You have to work with people, you have to form relationships, you have to understand what other people's goals are, and see how you can merge them with another set of goals, and see what we can come with in the end, and see if we can make something work. I love this place. I love city hall. It's, I think I was born to do this, because I love it. And I, I don't regret a minute of my public service here at city hall, and all the words, councilmembers, thank you so much. I mean, you know, really, when I got elected as a council member and as mayor, I just wanted to do a good job. And I had my philosophy, and it sounded like it rubbed off a little bit. Thank you. Thank you for being so good at what you do, because that, that council, or Mayor-elect, Fastbender's here, thank you, Mayor, you're, you're having a great council to work with here. You're going to have a lot of help, and you're going to do just fine, okay? Because these six individuals up here are going to help you. They're going to help you with your public service as you begin that role, okay? I want to start my remarks by thanking Melanie. Melanie, it's been wonderful. There's, I said the other night, there's nothing more important than the role of a mayor and a city administrator. We talked every day. You know, we talked about what's going to happen in the next council meeting, what's going to happen the next month, what's going to happen the next year. It's a natural role for the mayor and the city administrator to talk about issues that are prevalent every day. And it's been an honor to work with you, Melanie. You know, I've had the privilege to know many city administrators around our great state. As Dave indicated, you know, we're League of Minnesota Cities conferences, and I get to talk to them all. And I could tell you that you will not find many that can demonstrate the outstanding qualities that Melanie has. Her professionalism, her character, her commitment is something that I always will admire about Melanie. Hastings has benefited greatly by your work, and Melanie, you will be missed. We are also excited for you and your next challenge at the city of Burnsville, and all of us in this room wish you the very best. David, my friend, thank you for being here. We were together for 22 years here in the city as councilmember and as mayor. I've always respected your role. And, you know, ladies and gentlemen, we have two wonderful city administrators in this room tonight. And you were a wonderful mentor to Melanie, and you were a wonderful mentor to me. You know, we had a lot of conversations along the, along the way about what would be great for the city of Hastings and our goals. One of the things I will never forget is talking to you about the acquiring of the Hudson site, and where we are today. It was so fun to vote on that tonight and move that forward. But I remember those early discussions with you, Dave, among other things. And you're a good friend, and you're a true professional. And thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. Our city staff, our, the managers that are here, okay, and all who work with the city, we got to meet some of them tonight. I and our community have been fortunate to have knowledgeable, committed, and dedicated city staff, working and accomplishing important goals that support our great Hastings community. Thank you, city staff, for your support, for your tireless effort. I will never forget your dedication to the Hastings community. More importantly, our citizens do understand how valuable you are. They understand it. They get it. Over the years, I have received many letters, many phone calls, people up at the grocery store, okay, say, hey, you have an outstanding staff. Thanks to the fire department for picking my mom up when she had a heart attack. Thanks for the police department responding to my neighborhood. Thanks to the water department for going out there and fixing that, that, that line that may have broken. Thanks for parks, because we love recreating and keeping those up to date. Thank you to planning, because then we know what to do next, because we plan for it, okay? Thank you. The citizens know that we have outstanding staff. You have made the city council and I look very good for so many years, and I'm deeply appreciative. I've seen other cities work. Some work well, some do not work so well. Hastings works because you do it. Thank you very much, city staff. Counsel, it has been an honor to work with each and every one of you. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. And that's been my philosophy since day one, and it, it works. As Henry Ford once said, and he wasn't the president, that's up at maybe a mortar company, okay, he said, "Coming together is a beginning. Staying together is progress. Working together is success." I know you and the Mayor-elect Fastbender will continue to advance this community. The wonderful people of Hastings deserve it, and I know you will not let them down. Councilmembers, I have always been impressed by the commitment, the dedication, and the spirit of cooperation you have shown our city and myself and its citizens. So on behalf of the citizens of Hastings and myself, thank you so much. You mean, every one of you means so much to me, and your contribution to our city. Always remember that leadership is not about the next election, it's about the next generation. As I said the other night, serving on the city council for 28 years, and the past 12 as mayor of this wonderful community has been the greatest privilege of my life. Since I was a little boy, I thought it'd be so cool. When I first learned of electoral politics, you mean, you go somewhere in this booth, you put this X next to somebody's name, and you say, yes, we want that person to lead our community, or our state, or our nation. I couldn't believe it. I thought, that is really neat. You know, as a nine-year-old, I thought, wow, that is so cool. I want to do that. I thought that in that process, there wouldn't be a higher responsibility or an opportunity to do good. Serving as mayor has not always been easy, but it has always been rewarding. The relationships that you build last a lifetime, and the trials you face helps build one's resolve to do better and to learn. I am so grateful to the people of Hastings, who allowed me to serve them for all these years. It has enriched my life, and as together, we built a better community, together meaning all of us in this room. We have done that together. Our future in Hastings will be bright, and I look forward to the many advances our city will make in the years ahead. And I'll close with Einstein once said, he wasn't the president either, "There are only two ways to live your life. One is as though nothing is a miracle. The other is as though everything is a miracle." My relationship with you and the citizens of Hastings, and everybody in this room, it is, it is the latter. It is though everything is a miracle. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate everything that's out here tonight. Thank you. Thank you. (applause) Comments from the audience? Seeing none, counsel, we'll go to, we'll go to announcements. Thank you. Oh. Okay, counsel, we have announcements. There are announcements. Councilmember Foltz.
Technology. There we go. All right. Thank you, Your Honor. I have two quick announcements. First of all, this Thursday is Partners in Energy group meeting. This is actually the fourth workshop in a series. It's taking place, as I said, this Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the community room here at City Hall. And so, the group got off to a start several months ago, but they, we've had some staffing turnover here at the city, and so, I believe that there's been a little bit of a gap. And I'm excited. I'm going to be jumping in myself. I'm very passionate about the mission of this group, which is working towards energy efficiency and renewable energy, strategic planning for our city. And so, what's great about this particular meeting is that they're going to first review the first three workshops, if you've missed it. So, I'm happy to be jumping in now. And they're also going to be focusing on the installation of electric charging station infrastructure here within our city. So, it'll be very interesting. The second is that, to let folks know that the League of Women Voters is holding an event here on Saturday, January 5th. They're holding their annual legislative breakfast panel from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at the River Oaks Golf Course in Cottage Grove. All the area legislators from Woodbury, Cottage Grove, and Hastings have been invited, and I know that Senator Carla Biggum will be present at this nonpartisan event. If folks want to eat breakfast, they ask that you RSVP and also pay in advance, but otherwise, if you'd like to come, the discussion just starts at 10 a.m. So, if you'd like more detail, just Google Woodbury Cottage Grove League of Women Voters, and you'll see for more information. So, thank you.
Thank you for that announcement. Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, and I may defer to our Public Works Director, but Thursday at 7:45 a.m., yes, the Operations Committee will be meeting to go through the public meeting that was held for the infrastructure projects for next year. And we will be discussing the parking situation in and around Third and Eddy, 7:45 a.m.
Thank you for that announcement, counsel.
And I have to leave by 10:00 because I bowl.
Motivated, okay? Any other announcements? Okay, counsel, I have a few announcements. I was contacted by Michael Sharkey, who is, works with the Lakeside Cemetery Association, and they would like to have a discussion with the city council operations committee to talk about the future viability of Lakeside Cemetery. And they would like to have a, an informational meeting with the operations committee to talk about what their future holds there on that property. So, I would ask that, that the operations committee would meet with the representatives of the Lakeside Cemetery Association, and Mr. Sharkey, if you can have a meeting of that sometime in the next month or sometime in January, appreciate that. And I will forward this information to city staff, okay? On Tuesday, December 18th, the HPC's meeting has been canceled, so you can take that off your schedule for many of you. No HPC meeting. The Public Safety Advisory Commission meeting has been canceled. And on Monday, December 24th, this is no surprise to anyone, on Christmas Eve, the Planning Commission has been canceled. I think they made the right decision. There's good, good thinking there, John. On Tuesday, December 25th, the city offices are closed in observance of Christmas. And on Tuesday, January 1st, 2019, city offices will be closed for New Year's Day. On Tuesday, January 7th, 2019, there will be a, oh, this is good, coffee and a cookie reception for Mayor-elect Fasbender before the next council meeting. So, that's Tuesday, January 7th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m., a cookie and coffee reception for Mayor-elect Fasbender. And then, at 7:00 o'clock, will be the next city council meeting. We have some birthdays coming up, ladies and gentlemen. First is Julie Flattin. Congratulations, Julie, on your birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, number 29 again. That's great. And then, Tom Bachen, who's back there, he's having a birthday coming up on December 31st. Happy birthday, Tom. And Jeff Elliott, who was here a little bit earlier, will be having a birthday on that same day. Yes, councilmember Liefeld.
Clarification, the council meeting for the 7th or the 8th?
January, oh, excuse me, Monday, January 7th.
So, it is a Monday? Okay.
Monday, yes. It says Tuesday here, but yeah, it's Monday, January 7th. Thank you for the clarification. Okay? Before I make a, counsel, if you'll allow me, I'm going to make the motion to adjourn. I've never done that, but I like to do it in my last meeting. Suzie's back there, and I just want to recognize Suzie. She's my significant other, my friend, and she's a beautiful gal, and she helps me quite a bit, and she's a wonderful woman. And Suzie, thank you for all the years of your support. Thank you, honey. Okay? Counsel, if you don't mind, I believe that we are fully informed, and I will make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Boy, that was awfully quick.
Watch it.
And move and second it, and it's not a debatable motion.
I don't understand that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Hastings. (applause)